We're good?
Yes.
All right, so we're back up on the acceptance of, or the approval rather, of a contract with the Commonwealth for the Furnace Phase Two funding. Commissioners may recall that it's pretty exciting. We were awarded a grant in the amount of $42,000 to go towards the second phase of trails in Furnace Park. So I will move to approve the contract that's going to be entered into by and between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, and Nether Providence Township. And this is a contract in the amount of $42,000 for Phase Two of Furnace Park.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those vote in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation of land along Boland's Lane. This is pretty exciting. The township was able to acquire some land through a resident to add to our open space inventory. Sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the resolution on my computer here. All right, so I will move to approve a resolution of Nether Providence Township approving the acceptance of a donation of a real estate parcel located on Boland's Lane from Mariama Barkey. And I apologize if I mispronounced Ms. Barkey's name. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries five zero. Thank you. And now the last item on my agenda. Well, Dave, the agenda changed a little bit here. If you could pull it up on the screen. It's a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Glen Road property. This is something that we're doing through like a Blue Acres kind of funding. The resolution's up on the big screen here in the room. And what I'll do is I will move to approve the resolution of Nether Providence Township authorizing and approving the purchase of two real estate parcels located at 1012 Glen Road pursuant to a Pima grant for flood mitigation purposes. So what'll happen is the township will acquire this property. Any buildings, structures on there will come down, and we'll also be able to add this piece of land to our open space inventory. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries five zero. That is the end of my report. Pass it back to our president.
Thank you, Commissioner Garson. Apologize for my tardiness. Thank you all for jumping in, and you, Matt, in particular. And giving me enough time to pull the agenda up and connect to the Wi-Fi. So the first item on my agenda is a trailer parking ordinance that we've discussed, I'd say for about maybe five or six meetings now. In your packet, in your packet, you do have the latest draft of the ordinance. Man, I hate to punt this off, but I know that this was, that this was an interest of Commissioner McKenzie. So, and I believe she's joining us later this evening. I'm gonna just push it down on my agenda, and then we push it back. Dave, since solicitor isn't here, the changes, we have substantive changes on that since last month. Good changes. Okay. We'll take a look at that until Commissioner McKenzie gets here. We'll push it off. She comes in, then we will take care of it. And I will try to move through this committee report otherwise pretty rapidly. So, second item on my agenda is the stop signs at Harvey and Pine and stop signs in La Pedia Hills. Harvey and Pine, just wanna make sure that our engineer, Charles Catania, Harvey and Pine, we've looked at that. You've given your findings on it, that it meets the warrants? Or is it something that is on our agenda because we're looking at it upcoming?
We've completed the initial assessment, and it meets the warrants for the installation of a multi-way stop sign.
Great. The other, the other stop signs are a series of stop signs in the La Pedia Hills. So that's the Country Club section of the township. Just pull those up. I think we're gonna have to go to dual monitors for all the commissioners and the administration. I wanna get, Dave, do we have the, okay, good, there's the list. So this is, we discussed this last month at our legislative session. The pieces that we added were East Country Club, North and South, as that intersected with Sycamore. Prior to that, they, those were two three-way intersections, T-intersections, that had no stop signs in any direction of travel. And in last month's meeting, the plan as proposed to not have those two stop signs, the Sycamore intersection of East Country Club, North and South, at Sycamore. Does anybody have, we've spoken a good bit about all of these, maybe not so much about Harvey and Pine. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about these before I simply move to authorize the advertisement? All right, let me.
Mike, just to clarify, the ordinance has been advertised.
Oh, did we advertise that last month, that we added the Sycamores and advertised it?
That's correct.
Thanks. Thank you, David. I remember the discussion. I don't remember what we did. Okay, so even better. Please open. Bear with me. So this is gonna be ordinance 2021. All the ordinance don't have this resolution, so it's gonna be ordinance 827. So ordinance of the Township of Nether Providence, County of Delaware, amending the code of Nether Providence Township, Chapter 243, Vehicles and Traffic, Article Six, miscellaneous provisions at Section 243 through 37. Schedule Five, Stop Intersections to Establish Stop Signs in Various Locations on Country Club Lane, Sycamore Lane, and Harvey Road. Board of Commissioners, Nether Providence Township does hereby enact and ordain the following stop intersections, the following stop intersection is hereby established and amends the prior stop intersections established by Schedule Five with the addition of the following. And again, that's West Country Club Lane in the north and south directions at Sycamore, Sycamore east and west directions at Spring Haven, East Country Club in the north and south directions at Sycamore, and Harvey Lane in the north, bilaterally, north and south at Pine. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right.
That passes five zero. Thank you, Dave, for the clarification. All right, next on the agenda is a public comment resolution. We spoke about this a little bit at the legislative session last month, and our solicitor, Bob Scott, drafted a public comment resolution based upon his experience with other municipalities, including Media Borough. We have had an informal public comment process at different times, ranging from two minutes, three minutes, to indefinite. The idea here is, the idea here was to create some, some structure around public comments, ensure that, that the public, in particular Nether residents, as well as others visiting and who's been wishing to speak with the Board of Commissioners, get to do so, and that we keep the moving, the, our meetings moving along as well. This has been in your packet, at least in this draft, since earlier in the week. Dave, and the resolutions are just passed, we don't have to advertise resolutions. Does anybody feel like they need more time on this? This is the first time, I believe, we're seeing this draft. I'm happy holding off to our legislative session, maybe till we have something like public comments, until we have Commissioner McKenzie, and we all get a little bit of time to look at it.
Yeah.
The highlights of it are generally a three-minute limit per speaker that can be extended at the discretion of the board, and the presiding officer usually would be the president of the board. The public comments be limited to Nether Providence residents, again, but we'd have the discretion to allow non-residents to speak. And, I'm trying to think of any other highlights, and that's essentially it, but let's, we'll read this over the course of next week, and Dave will leave it on the agenda for the legislative session, and we can move on it then. And I guess we might as well just hold off any, actually, does anybody have any comments on it now, before we move on? If anybody has any substantive comments on the wording? Okay. Number two, or the second whereas?
Yeah, number two, sorry.
No, it's all right.
It should be public comment.
Oh, yeah. Public comment. Yeah. Oh, good. Perfect. Sorry, folks, we're still getting used to our electronic agendas and documents. It will get smoother, but there's a little delay before it's finalized and what is in our packets. Commissioner Garson has a good point. Dave, maybe we put this on our website? Post it? I'm sorry, I'm gonna take this, this mask is impossible to speak through. I'll put my mask on as soon as we're finished.
We can post it as a proposed draft.
Yes. This indicates that it's proposed draft, and that we will take up discussion and possible action on it at the May legislative session.
Mike.
Sure.
Like, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's something we wanna leave there or not.
They'd be a resident, though, even if they're a renter.
Yeah. I just don't know if that sort of sounds like.
Well, you know, we're also running into the conjunctive and disjunctive again with the slash. You make it clear by saying resident or taxpayer. I think the intent there is probably folks who aren't residents but who maybe own rental properties or have an invested stake in the township, that they should be, you know, should be provided a reasonable opportunity, at least above folks who have no connection with the township. Yeah, Dave, I would make that, anywhere you see that and/or in there.
Yep, I agree.
And even at the special, regular or special meeting. This is legal drafting, commonly, common legal drafting of, that isn't always clear. Later in that, Dave, at Paragraph Two A, there's an and/or on the second line, and there's also one about halfway down. Could be a regular or a special meeting, and residents or taxpayers. Just to clarify it, you could both be a resident and a taxpayer, or a resident or a taxpayer, but it clarifies the more open. It's not conjunctive and disjunctive.
The non-resident taxpayer could be somebody who owns a rental property or a commercial property, so.
Right.
Mike.
Yeah.
Could we ask the solicitor to consider putting some provisions in about comments as it relates to reading comments into the record? I don't know what the right way to do, but if we're gonna put structure around this, I think I'd like to have something that says either documents that have been read and agreed to by the board, that they've been read, are automatically put into the record, or something along those lines, that we don't necessarily have to read records into the record, that they will automatically go, or whatever the solicitor recommends as best practice there. I'm really open to it, but I think we just need something added.
That's a good point, and I actually don't know the rule. If they are not read in by Board of Commissioners, a commissioner or a speaker, and we accept them, I think the rule now is, it's just on a case-by-case basis, we could indicate that it's accepted into the record. Right, do we wanna leave that discretionary, or do we wanna say that, or do we want anything that is asked to be included in the record be there? Or just create some structure to it? I would say, do you mind reaching out to Bob Scott?
I don't. And I would say, I'm good with leaving a lot discretionary, given the topic, but then we should have something written around time, other aspects, like we should have sort of a checklist that then says, at the discretion of the board, prior to public comment, it will be established and agreed to, and then we move forward. But.
I just wanted to be clear exactly what you're asking for, because I apologize for your little muffled.
Oh, sorry.
Bob Scott wanted me to hear tonight, to any questions that you have.
Yep.
He's available to answer them, like, right now.
I don't think it has to be answered right now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not pressing at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
But also, I can still write them down and give them to Bob to get back to you on it later.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Awesome. Yeah, we're happy to, we'll circumvent the direct, the email to Bob. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, there's two, just to be clear, there's two kind of concerns or questions, not concerns, questions. One is, should we, is there best practice around reading previously received letters into the record? And two, as it relates to discretionary items, should there be some language around the board agreeing to that prior to public comment? And what are those elements if they are discretionary?
Thank you.
I will say, generally, boy, I haven't seen many that we've read into, we had that occurrence a couple of months ago. Not something we've seen a ton of, but we do have documents that we accept into the record from time to time. Let me just, real briefly looking over Bob's emails as well. Awesome, okay. Next item on the agenda, so we'll, we'll address the public comments after Tippity and Bob have had the opportunity to look into it, and at our next meeting, maybe we can take some action and vote it up or down. The next item is the fire tax credit additional approval, again, in your packet. This is, we moved and approved this last month.
Mike, it's just one additional.
One additional person.
Volunteer.
That we found.
Yes, and that is George Moore.
Oh, goodness, we missed George Moore. Do we have a, actually, that was just an approval by a majority vote, as I recall. So I would just say, you know, I move that we approve the tax credit for volunteer firefighter and township resident, George Moore. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Mike, if you could just add 2020 and 2021.
Got it. Let me amend that. I'm gonna take it back, give it a second. So we'll move to approve the fire tax credit for resident and firefighter George Moore for years 2020 and 2021.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes five to zero. Thank you, David, for the clarification. And, the changes to the marijuana penalties, this is an informational, an information item that we will probably take up in either at the legislative session in substance or in one of our summer combined meetings. Putting it on the agenda this week because it was a subject of some emails internally among a smaller number of commissioners, and so I wanted to make sure that we talked about it in public as well. Bob Scott's office did provide us with a draft ordinance from another municipality, lowering the penalties either from misdemeanor to a summary offense for possession of small amounts of marijuana. We have to, we've reached out to Chief Splain to get his thoughts on it. We have some additional questions for Bob Scott's office, and I think by the legislative session at the end of this month, we'll have a better idea of what authority we have to do that, the input of the Solicitor's Office and the Police Department, and we hope to be able to bring something before the board then. Anybody have any comments or questions on that sort of informational note? I'm gonna still hold off on, I'm gonna hold off, actually, let's, let's take the trailer parking up very quickly. This is, this draft ordinance has gone through a couple of iterations. It's been in our packet again since earlier in this week, in its most current iteration. If, my thoughts on this, I probably still have the same concerns about, same concerns about the restrictions in it potentially catching someone unawares. I don't think that's how, and in fact, I know that's not how our police or our, our code enforcement officer, current code enforcement officer operate, but I have some lingering concerns about it. I don't want that to stop a vote of the board. Actually, no, I can't. I'm gonna hold it for Kate, because if I, if, if.
We should let her.
Yes, I think, I think Commissioner McKenzie should comment on it, because if I, if I, at the end of it, vote against it, and there's a quorum here, and she hasn't had the opportunity to vote and speak about it, I would, I would think that unfair. So we will hold that for later in the agenda. Dave, sorry to make you, sorry to make your minutes a little bit more challenging. And next, we'll go on to Building and Zoning Committee Report with Commissioner Max Cooper. Max Cooper, Commissioner Cooper is at home this evening for family reasons, and he has a short report which will take on anyway. So the first item is the status of Media Walk. That's a development at 310 Wallingford. Hey, Commissioner McKenzie. Yeah, they really are. I'm running in here late and without a mouse, other than this touchpad. Dave, I recall speaking about this earlier in our agenda meeting. Do we have any, are there any informational items in the packet, or is it just an update from?
For 310, for Media Walk? Yep, just an update that construction is continuing. They've got one house built so far with work to go on it. Several foundations have been put in for additional homes, and some clearing was performed in the rear of the property just recently through that easement that was granted to the township. And that's all we have right now.
Great, so there's, there's no escrow release or anything of that nature? Or Charles, do you have any other items on 310?
There is no escrow release consideration tonight, but we will have one for the legislative meeting.
Great. Thank you. Second item for Commissioner Cooper's Building and Zoning Committee Report is the zoning hearing board agenda. Any of these items of particular significance? To summarize?
I suppose it depends who you ask, but these are two fairly average residential requests.
Great, and these agendas are, the agendas in the minutes are on our township website, if you are interested, and also the hearings are public. All right, that concludes the Building and Zoning Committee Report, I think, Dave, unless that agenda was updated. Good. Let's go back to, let's circle back to the, the Public Safety Committee Report and the open item that, Kate, we left the trailer parking ordinance, we held that in abeyance until your arrival to discuss. The updated ordinance is in the, in the packet. I don't know if you've had time yet to open your laptop and get it yet. We're all on the same Wi-Fi here, and.
Sorry, while you're looking at it, Bob wanted me to let everybody know that with the trailer park, the parking, he didn't make any significant changes to it. He said that the last time we were here, that you guys discussed lesser penalty, but he said the penalty was only $15, so he didn't really see any need to make any changes to it.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe that was just me grinding away, trying to figure out what would make me comfortable with it, and I'm not sure I will. So, Kate, I'll, I'll let you run with it, and if, if everybody, does anybody wanna make any comments on it or proposed edits? The folks think we're ready to move on it? If we are, I will make that motion.
Yeah, I think the background, if everyone recalls, was just that there was, you know, some, some of this going on in the fourth ward, and things that I think people wouldn't necessarily expect to be parked out front of their house, but it was legal. So we certainly don't wanna be curtailing anyone's, you know, ability to go about their sort of everyday life, but, you know, I think the expectation is that you don't have like a Verizon truck with a big trailer with, like, you know, the coil things in front of your house, when it's, certainly when it's not yours. So that's where the impetus for this. So I had reviewed the draft before, I was okay with it. It sounds like not a ton of changes were made, and I understand Mike's concern. We don't wanna have like excessive penalties. It really just needs to be probably more of a reminder and something that we can use in a situation where there's, where there's neighbors that are concerned about something where I think in this area, they're, you know, probably somewhat legitimately concerned with the things that could have been parked there before. So I'm good with it. I have not reviewed this specific draft, but it sounds like it wasn't significantly changed, so I'm okay moving forward.
And it's a tough one, because really not any other ordinance, we, well, some of us try to take a, probably most of us on the board generally has been to take a conservative approach to these ordinances, and if there's another ordinance, nuisance ordinance that can come into play, sometimes we'll back off. This is one of the situations where you need an ordinance or you don't. So really, the only way to enforce it or to protect against potential problem is to enact an ordinance, and none of those are perfect, of course. enact an ordinance, and none of those are perfect, of course. Alright, so I will move. Don't advertise, yeah.
Where does it say what the penalty is in here? Or is it, or is it referencing back to something under our parking ordinance? Maybe it's because we're, we're expanding the parking restriction to include trailers, and I'm assuming that's under the parking restriction ordinance.
Let's put Acting Solicitor Griffin on the spot.
I don't think it's necessarily written here. I think it's already in the, in the code or in the.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. And thank you, David, for the reminder that this is an ordinance and needs to be advertised. So the motion, which I can fully get behind, is for the advertisement of, and as, as of yet unnamed, unnumbered ordinance, I believe, Dave, unless we've added one. So it'll be 2021 dash something. Amending the provisions of another Providence Township Code for the purpose of regulating the parking of trailers on public streets. Did I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, comments or questions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I always try to fit it in the right spot. So, my only question, and I'm gonna direct it to Commissioner McKenzie, is, in this particular case, could an individual or individuals, wherever this related to, could they move it onto their property in a way? Like, is there room in their driveway? Are they choosing not to do it? I'm just curious about that. If it's like a boat.
In this situation, they lived on a busier road and parked it down like a cul-de-sac that was somewhat close, you know, in front of someone else's house. So I think, just, you know, just sort of hearing that scenario, I'm not sure that I would love that either. And so, you know, it was a work truck. It's a branded work truck. So I think the thought is, it might not necessarily need to be at their house in the first place. Like, it seems like a truck that could probably be at some sort of depot for that particular business, and they could take their personal vehicle there. I'm not sure if it's in their driveway in this case, but I, I think that, I feel more comfortable having it not sort of in front of someone else's house.
And am I reading it correctly that it would not apply to, it would still apply even though Section D2 says in the course of construction, as in it's going on actively in that moment? So if I, if I, if it's a work truck, it would apply to an overnight work truck, but not if there's work actively happening in the house.
Yeah, and I think when contractors leave stuff overnight, they usually check in with D, right? I mean, that's.
They don't, they don't usually check in. Marty, under point D.
Yep.
Where it says it doesn't apply to, I, I think that's what you're referencing, D2?
Yep.
Okay. Does that, does that answer your question?
I think it does, yeah. I mean, and, and even, even in, I, I think this has given a lot of flexibility for waivers and da, 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 da. I just wanted to be clear around some of the other aspects. And we've talked about this before, I just, since it's been a while, we don't want to punish somebody who's just doing work in the course of their day, they're, they're working construction or whatever the case, landscaping. This is more for scenarios in which someone is doing, as Commissioner McKenzie said, parking in front of someone else's house seems kind of.
No, and even in those cases where we have like the paving contractor and like aqua vehicles being left over, and I, I know that they do talk to the neighbors, I thought they had checked in the township, but I mean, even if not, I, I think that's different than.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Kate, yes, they do. I, I thought you just meant any contractor checking in. Yes, they, they do.
Their big equipment like.
Yeah.
I think this will help deal with the egregious situations where people are just storing work trucks that, like Kate said, could really be at a depot on our public streets, which, which in my opinion is an eyesore. So I, I do support this.
Sorry about that, I had my microphone off. Commissioner Malloy, is that it for your comments? Alright, the motion's been seconded. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, that passes six to zero. Moving on to finance and administration with Commissioner McKenzie.
R.
Commissioner McKenzie, would you like just to move on to the.
Would you mind?
Community enhancement?
Yeah, is that okay?
Commissioner King, are you okay with your report? Okay, we'll move a little bit out of order and on to community enhancement committee report with Commissioner Stephanie King.
Thank you. I have two items on my agenda this evening. The first being the summer camp registration, which is, which is open right now. There's only about 20 spots left, so that's great news. We also have open spots for camp counselors. If anyone knows any 16-plus young adults who would like to apply and be a camp counselor, tell them to look on the website, or you can give them the information off of our website. And that runs from June 28th to July 29th. No camp the July 1st for 4th of July. And then the second thing on my agenda is the MTF contract approval. We were recently approved and received $250,000 from the DCED's multimodal transportation fund program, so we need to make a, a motion to approve that. So I would make a motion to approve the multimodal transportation fund grant through the Commonwealth Finance Authority in the amount of $250,000. Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay, that motion carries, I believe that was six to zero. And that, I think, was the fastest I have ever.
Alright, well, it works. Maybe I should have talked slower for you. No, no, it worked.
Commissioner McKenzie, are you ready to go?
I am ready. For some reason, the Word documents are taking forever to open on my computer, but now they are open.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner King, and on to finance with Commissioner McKenzie.
Okay, first is a pligot account. Apparently, there is a rule that you need to have real estate tax funds held in a separate account, 25% of a payment for a real estate tax appeal if the homeowner requests it. And we have had a homeowner request it for a tax assessment that's under appeal. And so, I understand that Dave had talked to Solicitor Scott about it, and, you know, he confirmed this is what we need to do. And so we need to, we need to make a motion to open a new pligot account to put these funds in escrow while the appeal is pending. So let me open it up here. Okay, so, I guess there's not really anything specific on the account, right, Dave? I just need to make a motion. Okay. So I would make a motion to, for another Providence Township to open another pligot account, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust account, to hold the specific real estate tax funds pending assessment appeal. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, what are we, six, zero? Okay, next thing, David mentioned this to me, he might have talked to some of you about it as well. Over on Quaint Road, there is a house that I understand is pending a sale, and as part of, in the township code, as part of the use and occupancy process, there needs to be an inspection of the sewer lateral. In this case, they've just had some difficulty getting it done, and they've asked for, Dave has it up on the screen there, they've asked for an exception. I think there's a lot of concern about that from a bunch of different parties, you know, our engineer, and I think I have the same sort of concern that, and Dave as well, that this would, would probably not be a great idea to do in this case, because the house is 50-plus years old. And without a video inspection, there's really no way to know whether the lateral's in an acceptable state or not, and this is gonna be on, on the buyer if anything is wrong. And, you know, Dave made a good point to me earlier that if the line breaks or cracks, no one's gonna know, and, you know, this could, this could lead, open the door for, for other people requesting these in these situations where I think it's probably more important here than if there was new construction or something like that. So just the fact that it's difficult, you know, I feel badly, I, I don't want to put people in a, in a place to be holding things up, but I don't think it makes sense to grant an exception here. I don't think it'd be a responsible decision. So do you need, you don't need anything from us on that? We would need to make a motion if we were going to grant the exception, is that right? Do you want to make a motion either way?
I think it might be best to make a motion to officially deny.
You have it up on the screen. Okay, so, is there any information on the top where I can be specific about? Oh, it's, I see it, okay.
Can you see their names?
Yeah, I would make a motion to.
Right.
Deny the request for an exemption from the sewer lateral line test for the property at 100 Quaint Road. May I get a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I just had a quick comment, and I do feel sorry about this, and I suspect that this is, and Charles may know, we don't need to, not need to get into it, but I suspect this is something we'll see semi-regularly. Even, I know that my sewer goes into an old cesspool connection and then out. So getting through that, I can imagine, I bought my house before this was enacted, and I'm sure that mine, being 100 years old, has got some issues. So, it's, it's unfortunate, but it's probably something we're gonna see again, and I agree with you, Kate.
Yeah, yeah, we do not like to make people's life more difficult, but it sounds like we'd be doing the seller, or the buyer a big disservice by, by doing this.
Yeah, and the other point there is, if the buyer turns around, sells it three years later, there's a different Board of Commissioners, now the buyer's gonna get stuck with, with a problem that they should have been warned about but didn't, didn't know.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that was the comment we didn't vote yet, right?
Yeah.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries six, zero. And then the last item on my agenda is UniLogic. There's a request to shift to a cloud server. This is a computer program that we use for property managed, for property management. It tracks permits, rentals, code enforcement, and that sort of thing. We've been using this service for about 10 years, and it was always hosted on our server. So now that Microsoft is ending Internet Explorer, we need to host it on a different environment. And so I understand, do you have to have UniLogic host it, or is it an option to not, but this seems to be the most logical?
So, UniLogic had always been hosted on our server, and the advantage of that was we didn't have to pay them anything for the hosting fee. The downside of that was it was taking up space on our server and can only be used when it is here in the township, township building. So if, say, say, our public works director, code enforcement officer are out on the street, they have to call us or come to the building to use it. Now they're not really giving us that option anymore. They've kind of told us, because we, we pushed back on it a little bit, because this was unexpected, it wasn't something that's been planned out for a long time. We pushed back on it. Maureen successfully did, and was able to get that $2,400, that one-time fee reduced.
Yeah.
But their concern was that if they tried to host it on our server, they would damage our server, we could potentially lose the data, and then the cost savings by not hosting it might be lost anyway.
No, I think it, I think it makes sense, and like Dave said, he's, he gave me some numbers here, and they have negotiated down the monthly fee significantly, Maureen did, and got rid of our one-time fee. I just wasn't sure if this was the only option, but I think it sounds like a logical option. And so the monthly fee here is $130, you know, a month, and I think just the access to, access remotely probably makes that worthwhile. I just wasn't sure if there were sort of alternatives, but it seems like this is it, and I think the price is probably pretty reasonable for what we're getting there.
I have one question related to the server. Did we, did we replace our, did we get a new server a couple of years ago? Just wondered, the thought is, at some point, probably move to cloud-based servers. I imagine municipalities might have some concern about that, keeping it local?
We have both, actually.
Okay.
We have an on-premise server and a cloud server, and both, both get backed up.
And so UniLogic thinks even the cloud server, even using our existing cloud server may cause issues with our data?
Is it not sophisticated enough or something? Is that?
I, it's over my head, the IT questions, we, we've gone back and forth with them for a couple of weeks, because we were, we were trying to avoid doing this if we didn't have to. They basically told us, you don't really have, have another option. We're, apparently, their only client that was pushing back on this, and they, UniLogic is a very common service, you know, where they're used all throughout Delaware County and Bucks County and Chester County. So unfortunately, we're kind of cornered.
Okay. Yeah, it makes, it sounds like, right, they'd have to give us a, they'd have to, yeah, I'm trying to imagine how we'd get it onto our cloud server without their assistance.
One of the benefits, actually, is that we, GoTo had, our IT company had told us recently that we were pushing up against our server space. They don't like us to be above about 70%, and we've been at about 75%. So I'm hopeful that this will bring us down a good chunk and save it so we don't have to add space.
Great, that satisfies me. Thank you, David.
And my only comment isn't specifically related to UniLogic, because I don't have enough information about them, but I think I'd, I'd like to talk more about our processes in terms of access and security and having a complete audit of, of where we stand. And, and not that they're not wrong. If our server, if our on-prem server is 75%, like, that's gonna start to really muck up everything, right? Imagining email runs through there and everything else. So, we're gonna wanna, but here's my fear. We move everything up into the cloud, and by the way, the Department of Defense is gonna be moving into the cloud. I mean, that's just where everything's going. But if we don't put our own processes in place to protect data and have right backups and everything else on a regular basis, we're putting our information at risk. And so it just needs, we still have a lot of steps that we need to take.
GoTo could probably explain it much better than I can, but we do, we do have our cloud backups, everything is backed up on the cloud, and it's backed up on, on-premise. Years ago, maybe four or five years ago, we had an attempted ransom attack, and it was because of our successful backups that we were able to not have to deal with the ransomware, never had to pay anything that sort. So, I feel pretty comfortable with, with GoTo's backups and everything like that and how they're hosting the server, and I think they could certainly talk to you in much more technical detail than I can. So let me know if you'd like to set something up with them, and we could have a, have a good conversation with them.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just as a board, we need to know, right? And we're ultimately, we have a responsibility to, to do this, because if our information goes up to UniLogic and then, you know, I see a CNN report that municipalities across the country have just been hacked, that's what we want to try to avoid, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so do you need, I'm just looking at a letter here from Maureen, do you need us to make a motion on this?
I, I think just an approval of the new monthly fee. This was an unbudgeted $130 a month fee that we'll now be responsible for, so.
Yeah, so just to reiterate, there was, there was the suggestion that there would be a one-time fee of $2,400 and a monthly fee of $175 a month for the hosting, and Maureen got them to waive the $2,400 fee and got the monthly fee down to 130. So, you know, I think we've already made some good headway on that, and, so I am inclined to approve moving forward with that. So I would make a motion to approve the UniLogic $130 a month fee, which covers a switch to their cloud server.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six, zero, and that is it for me.
Alright, is that your report? Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, and now on to Public Works Committee with Commissioner Robert E. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Two items on the agenda here this evening. The first is the road resurfacing bids, as, as you'll all recall, a couple of weeks ago, we received bids for Phase 2, and at that time, I think Charles was going to look into the low bidder, who was Miko Inc., and I understand, we've heard back from Charles on that, and he has vetted that construction firm and recommended that we accept the, the bid, if I understand correctly. So, so with that said, I would move that we accept the bid of Miko Construction for Phase 2, for Phase 2 work. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any, any questions or conversation or?
Can we just clarify the amount of the?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
And Robert, if, just real quick, I wanted to add one thing. We, with, with the funding that we have available, if all of the alternate items were included in this contract, the township will be responsible for an extra $3,600. So we have our funding that was available through the Aqua contribution due to the work that they'd done in the township, and then our, our county liquid fuels and our liquid fuels funding. So I would probably, I think it would make sense to use an extra $3,600 to ensure that all of the alternate roads were included in that. So.
I think that's a no-brainer, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. In which case, you wouldn't want to go with the, the 279, 294.60.
Okay, so if, if this works, I would amend the motion as just stated by Mr. Grady and accept the bid from Miko Construction in the sum of $279,294.60. I recommend that we do that. Do we have a second?
And that includes the 36, essentially $3,600 out of our liquid fuels budget?
Yes, correct.
Second.
Out of our general fund.
General fund, sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And if not, before I go any further, Charles, just want to thank you for your help on this. And with that said, all in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and it looks like the motion passes five to zero, six to zero, one?
We are at six.
Six to zero, six to zero. I should know better. Okay. Thank you so much. And I guess, second item is an issue that's come up in the past here on many occasions, and it's the topic of streetlights. And I guess I want to begin by thanking Dave, because Dave's been nice enough to provide me with some information or ideas here, I guess, on coming up. I think we've talked about coming up with some type of a criteria to try to have a better ability to determine where, you know, how we want to evaluate streetlights and where we want to add them and so forth and so on. So I'll just, if I may, I'll just talk real briefly about the, some of the ideas that Mr. Grady had suggested here. And they would include proximity to pedestrians, generators, schools, swim clubs, libraries, businesses, traffic volume, crime, use of the area as a through street, a through street, location of existing utility poles, costs of installation, costs of maintenance, costs of ongoing electrical, these, location of other streetlights. They should not, I guess they should all be within, not greater than 300-foot distance or 100 yards, I guess, must be used, or must, must be used to light a public way of way, and acceptance of residents representing 70% of the lighting frontage for both sides of the road. So I don't know if everyone has that in their packets or not, but anyway, certainly would like to, you know, open it up for any discussion on anyone else's thoughts or ideas for future installation for streetlights.
This sounds comprehensive and smart, and it would just be consideration. So we'd just approve, I don't know if we need a vote, but we, I guess we could move on it, but approve it for use in future streetlight requests. To stop looking away when I, when I'm speaking, and looking away from the microphone, it just, I'm sure it dies down.
Are we getting a lot of requests for streetlights?
I've gotten several requests. And the one thing I, the one thing that comes to my mind is there were questions about lighting up paths till the school bus stops, which, I mean, this is talking about proximity to schools. I don't know if we want to go be that specific. I don't know if we necessarily need to, but those were sort of the questions for me, where like, there's a specific dark place here, and seven children walk past it on the way to the bus every morning, things like that. But I think, you know, in a lot of this, that has to do with, you know, volume and things like that. So I guess I'm right with it as is. But those have been the requests that I've gotten.
I think it makes sense. We could amend it to proximity to schools or.
School stops.
I mean, a bus stop's like gathering.
Yeah, schools and bus stops, traffic volume. We just had a bullet point for mass transit.
Or you could just pick a very example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're all pedestrian generators.
Yeah. But they're special ones, because they're cute and small, and you can't see them as well.
Marty, I was going to say too, I mean, I, it seems to me, I don't feel like, I mean, personally, I don't feel like I'm getting a lot of streetlight requests, but I think that, you know, every once in a while I do. I just think that, I think the idea, I guess, more to try to maybe come up with like a system, sort of like have a system in place, almost like we have in place for the road stop signs or road speed bumps or something like that. It's just something to, you know, give us a, you know, as opposed to just that everyone's just kind of like, wow, it's a brand new issue, sort of. So I think that that's, I think that's kind of the thought behind this. And I guess part of this, like I said, I mean, I actually, it's funny, things come in bunches, because, you know, I don't get a lot of these, and then all of a sudden, I have two of them, you know, in the last couple of weeks. So.
Only, the only thing I would say, now that we amended that, Dave, could we put a italicized E period, italicized G period, schools, just so it's not a closed list?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Just an EG at the front of that parentheses, just inside the front.
Dave, I think, were you saying here that the cost, I have a note here from you, is the cost about $558 a year per light? Is that, is that what you're?
It, it depends on the location. So, and some of the specific requests that you'd received, I think on Scott and Wilder, we had talked to Charles Higgins' sons, our electrical contractor, to get pricing in that location, and it was 558 per light for the installation there. The ongoing annual cost is estimated to be about $10 per light for the, for the electricity, not, not including maintenance, although LEDs last for, you know, should go up to about 20 years without needing maintenance. One of the things that is difficult, though, is that the cost is never uniform. So just because it costs, say, $558 on Scott or Wilder, doesn't necessarily mean it's going to cost that. On, you know, for example, the, I don't, I'm not sure what street Kate was referencing, but it may be different, because the considerations that are, you know, you have to think about are, is there electricity feed that's already within the area? So if you've got a rear feed in properties where the poles are behind the houses, you tend to see some of that, maybe in like the sixth and seventh wards. It's a little trickier if you've got underground feeds, which pays, which case you'd have to place a pole there. So you're also including the cost, like, this doesn't include the need for a pole, because there's already poles that are there. So I guess that's a long way of saying it, it could be more, a lot more expensive depending on the situation.
Good. Well, we have it up there as a consideration.
I'd like to add something, or at least talk about it a little bit more, and that is, when you think about what streetlights can do for the beautification of a community, you know, and we're thinking about cost. If we put up the most utilitarian Soviet-style light, that's terrible. But if we put something that could have a little bit more of a curb appeal, that benefits everybody in a very different way, and it becomes a different kind of an investment. And just as something to consider, I'd like to, I'd like to add something around beautification or type of.
You'd probably get more complaints about streetlights than adding. And I'll, I mean, I'll say the quiet part out loud. This is for us, for when people call and ask us, that we could point them to some criteria. It's still, with that many bullets, it's exceedingly subjective, but it does provide residents with some feeling of satisfaction that there's something going on in the process, but.
So if they say, you know, why did they get it and I'm not, you know, kind of to manage your Grady's point, depending on the location of the electric connection, it could, the cost could be, could vary greatly.
Yeah.
So I think it helps shed some transparency on it by having the.
And I don't think, and for the beautification, we've, since we've moved to all LED, that the heads of those lamps are all the same, and for uniformity of cost, and at some point, we get an update, and we get it every year on the, on how we're doing on that deal. So they're all pretty much the same, although, you know, it could considerably, it could conceivably apply to like a decorative lamp in a neighborhood or a park, but I think it's probably just talking about this, no, this is generally intended for the same streetlights that we have sort of everywhere. They cast a really kind of pale, ugly white that doesn't cut through fog, but it is brighter than the old yellow sodium lights. So do we, I put the EG at the front of that parentheses, just so we. Yeah, and right, right between the parentheses and the S in schools. E period, G period, comma. There you go. Oh, doesn't like the comma. There it is, I was going to say. All right, we might as well move on this, and we could, we could add beautification or not, but we probably should move on it as a formal considerations within our exceedingly subjective analysis of streetlights.
Do you want beautification added? And is there a good spot that you see it?
I do see what you're saying, though, because some, you drive through some towns, and they have very nice decorative, but I feel like what.
Okay, well, any, any other, I mean, certainly as time passes too, if we have any other thoughts or things we might want to add or better ideas, I mean, certainly always open to, you know, discussing it further or adding any, any great ideas that anybody might have. So anyway, with that said, I think that concludes my report. Mr. President, thank you so much.
I just have a quick question under that. Do we know the timing for the paving of the opposite? It was supposed to start towards the end of this month, right? Is that still the plan?
They are, that's, that's the thing, Robert. Yeah, I'm sorry, just tell them. Glasgow discovers to start on about May 27th.
Wow.
Okay.
Nice, okay.
And we want to move on the, let's move on the criteria. I don't think it ever hurts. We'll move to adopt the criteria for streetlight considerations upon resident or taxpayer request. Could I get a second?
Second, I'm sorry, I totally interrupted you.
No, that's all right. Any comments or questions? Here, none? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're going to give that, Robert, you want an aye for that? I figure we'll move it, just doesn't hurt.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so that'll be six to zero.
Yes, please.
So any, or is there an addition to Commissioner O'Connor's report, or we're good? Just the Glasgow timing.
I just had a, I was asking Robert a point of clarification on streetlights.
That's what we're talking to Charles. Yeah, so I mean, there is, so there, I mean, there is a request from my ward, I guess. We have a note, we have a message here from a constituent of mine from the intersection of Scott and Wilder. If I can, I'll just, I'll just mention it really quickly. I'll just kind of touch through the highlights. The folks write to the board here and thank us for our time and consideration. They basically indicate there's no streetlights on Scott Lane, which is a long furaway, you know, which connects to a number of roads. They, they indicated that they're concerned because there's a lot of trees in the area which block the vision, especially if someone is standing on the side of a property. It's difficult to see, as we all know, especially with springtime. And, you know, I don't know about everyone's neighborhoods, but I know in our, you know, my neighborhood, my ward, and probably in lots of your neighborhoods, there's lots of folks out, you know, nice weather, and a lot of people are still home. So walking and all of that sort of stuff, lots of foot traffic, lots of kids, lots of bikes, and all that sort of stuff. And so with that said, the folks, these folks who have reached out to me, and again, there's, there's actually two of them. There's folks on the intersection of both Wilder and Beaumont, and then Wilder and Scott have both. So, you know, I don't know how the best way to do this. I don't know if, you know, I don't know if everyone wants to drive out and take a look at those areas. I don't know what the.
We could pull up the, not, probably not in this meeting, but we do have that township map with the, with the light placements. Maybe we could do that.
Can we do that in a couple of weeks or something like that?
Yeah.
Dave, is that something we could?
Yeah. And I have driven on Wilder. I just had to double check, making sure I was thinking of the right area. It is, it does seem dark sometimes at night when you're driving. There does not seem to be. I'm sure there's one, but, you know, in my mind, I feel like it is dark, and there does not seem to be any streetlights.
Right, right. Well, you know what I'll do between now and the next meeting? I'll get the two property addresses. I'll forward them to the board, and if anyone wants to take a look at the area, you know, you're certainly welcome to do that.
That's not the intersection where we looked at the stop sign in the fall?
No.
There's a bump on somewhere.
It's like a block south.
Yeah, 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 it's close to that. It's very close to that, though. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it gets, yeah, maybe if you circulate it, and I think before we certainly vote on it, one of us should go through there at night and see it to get a subjective feel for it. And then also, when we're, Dave, when you pull the diagram up, I believe that has houses on it too, but if not, you know, superimpose it on Google Maps or something like that, so we could, you don't have to go that crazy, but yeah, I'm sure that, yeah, I mean, we could, we could take a Google Maps and the satellite view, not satellite, the, that wants to just have the outline of the buildings and, and put it approximately where it is. Two things I'd be concerned about is, is it a real need? And then is it going to be shining in somebody's window? Does it need, if, do we think it should be shielded in any way? Because Commissioner Malloy, what we've, what we've seen is we replace these throughout the whole township. These are brighter, and they replaced some when it goes from nothing to where we put them, or they replace older ones that had softer light. We've had some residents who obviously didn't know that it was going to happen, and all of a sudden, they're complaining. So just to cut that, head that off, we'll take up at least some informal analysis of the potential risk to others.
That's what I always call the law of unintended consequences, when we try to do something good and five other bad things result from it, so.
That's, it's like a maxim of government.
Exactly.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Connor. Now on to Infrastructure Committee report with Commissioner Marty Malloy.
Thank you, President Knapp. Four items, mostly updates. Just wanted to let folks know that the watershed registration protection program is open. Our township engineer is preparing estimates, so we're looking forward to seeing more information about that moving forward in future meetings. The East Possum Hollow sidewalk project is out for bid, and bids will be open, opened on June 10th. And this is just another big piece of good news, which is just a reminder that PennDOT was able to provide the additional funding. So we're hoping the bids come in at a level that no additional funding will be needed for East Possum Hollow sidewalk project, which is great. My third item, moving quickly along, is the multimodal transportation fund through DCED is going to be open for us to apply through July 31st. This is the same program that the township has received, $750,000 for sidewalks on Providence Road. We should be thinking about projects in our respective wards, but I know I would be really excited to keep working on Providence Road as a primary source of that project, so.
Absolutely.
I mean, unless there's any other objections, I'd say let's go for it and try to knock that project further along down the line.
You're here.
Okay. So do you need anything specifically from us, Dave, to take some action on that?
We'll, we'll need to pass a resolution in July.
Okay.
Would you like to wait to do that, to the last meeting, just in case?
Yep.
Some great project comes up along the way.
Awesome. And then my last item for tonight is, and I want to bring it up, so the watershed restoration and protection program grant agreement. This is for the Palmer's Lane contract approval. So the watershed restoration program grant from 2020 round, we were awarded partial funding for stormwater improvements along Palmer's Lane. We are still working out a scope adjustment, but we need to improve, we need to approve the grant agreement. I took a look at it. Solicitor Scott took a look at it. I did not see anything that jumped out at me in my examination. out at me in my examination. And has it, there, there it is. So I am going to move that we approve the grant agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through the Commonwealth Financing Authority, another Providence township, in the amount of $22,000 and no cents for the Palmer's Lane.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries six to zero. Mr. President, that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Manager Grady, before we go to your report, one item that I, that, that we want to address is that we have to set our summer meeting schedule, decide whether or not we're going to have joint meetings or, or not, and then on what Thursday of the month they will appear. Right? We have to both approve that we're moving to one and pick the date, right? I mean, obviously in one.
Yeah, we.
One decision.
Both meetings have been advertised, so you can choose whichever one you would like.
Great. So I've heard from Commissioner McKenzie suggesting the fourth week, the fourth Thursday of the months of June, July, and August. I will note that the only two weeks, or partial weeks, where I'm away will be July and August, and I'll be working, but I'm, my wife will kill me, and my family should kill me if I attend Commissioner meetings. But I would be available, I don't know if we could do that remotely, Commissioner. My only concern would be if we knew now that in advance, we'd have a hard time making a quorum.
This is for the, the last?
To be the last, well, not necessarily, it's the fourth Thursday. Yeah, that's the last Thursday.
I'm going to be away in August.
Really? So I know Dave had suggested that we keep them consistent, but the only one I really care about is, is June 10. So if we, if we did the last week in June and like the first week in August, are you, like, I mean, fourth and second, but.
Yeah, I mean.
But certainly, whatever.
I'll be out of town that last week, that last Thursday in August.
So.
But it might not matter.
Yeah, it might not matter. All we need is four, but there'd be two away guaranteed. Does anybody else know that they'd be away that week?
I plan my vacations around the township, so I'll be here.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah, that would be, I would, I would miss, I would be, I might miss the June meeting, but I have no plans. I'm aware I've been with interrupting you this in the July or August.
Another question I have, and maybe Tiffany for Bob, would be, I can't, I just can't recall the, whether it's even possible to have a quorum if one of the commissioners is virtual. I don't, we still are technically under the COVID emergency operating procedures. We probably could do it.
And there's, there's actually legislation that's been introduced that would allow virtual participation in meetings, virtual or telephonic.
And we have the capabilities, at least with the Zoom and then the YouTube, that we could probably figure it out. So why don't we go ahead and do the fourth week? I, I think that we're, we're organized enough that if it looks like, we could just check in, make sure that we're going to have a quorum, and then we, if necessary, somebody can jump on a Zoom with a, you know, a little frozen cocktail in their hand or something. All right, so I will move that we, that we amend our, and advert, do we have to re-advertise, I guess? So we just amend the meeting schedule, or just adopt a summer meeting schedule of combined workshop and legislative sessions on the fourth, fourth Thursday of the months of June, July, and August. Could I get a second? Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. And on to you with the manager's minute.
Thank you, President Knapp. So this week, the week of May 19 through the 16th is National Law Enforcement Week. Unfortunately, Chief Splain is not with us this evening, but we want to thank all of our, our police officers, our 16 police officers, our administrative assistant, Kim Daniel, and our police chief, David Splain, for all they do. And we also want to recognize those who've lost their lives in the line of duty. So this is a week to thank them. So please, if you see a police officer, thank them for their service this week. COVID vaccinations, right now, there are many resources out there if you are interested in getting vaccinated. I'm having a little trouble pulling this up here, but Delaware County is certainly a resource. Delaware County is offering the COVID-19 Pfizer vaccine now for 12 to 15-year-olds. This is a recent update. Everyone at this point is eligible to be vaccinated. There's many options of places where you can get vaccinated. You can do it through Delaware County. Go to delco PA.gov/vaccination. There are also 50 sites within Delaware County that are not affiliated with the county, but are still good ways to get vaccinated. So please, please keep these in mind. And there's also, Delaware County also offers a homebound vaccination program. They're willing, there are many, many ways to get your vaccine here. This is a great resource if you know someone or you yourself are unable to get out to get vaccinated. You can get information by calling 484-276-2100, or email covid19resources@co.dellaware.paa.us. They have ways that they will come to you or pick you up so that you can go get vaccinated. There are also pop-up vaccine clinics that are happening throughout Delaware County. I understand they're going to be starting in Upper Darby soon. I've been working with the inter-community health director to try and set up a location at South Media Fire Company's Food Truck Friday. We're also exploring some other locations within the township. So please keep an eye out for these.
Dave, just to add to that, there you go. Good, you got it. And I'll add to this, I thank you to Pastor Young, new pastor at St. Paul AME Church on Washington in South Media for reaching out and providing some information about the Black Clergy of Philadelphia efforts for vaccines. And so this will be a vaccine site with the coordination with Rite Aid and the Black Clergy of Philadelphia at our very own St. Paul AME Zion Church. And if any of you have not been there, I encourage you to go see it. It's a wonderful little church and a pretty cool event. So thank you, Pastor Young. I guess I'll say the times, Dave, since I took it over from you. It is obviously two doses. The first will be Friday, May 21, which is next Friday, and the second dose is going to come on June, Friday, June 18. And that is between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Also, Commissioners, I'll circulate this, a good one to get out if you send an update to your listeners.
Thank you, President Knapp. Moving along, as I mentioned earlier, the Pfizer vaccine is available for adolescents at this point, so that's something the county wanted us to pass along. And last bit of county information related to COVID, there is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that is available. I understand there is a lot of money out there that is available and still available to be distributed. I think it's upwards of about $37 million. So assistance is available for any costs incurred after April 1, 2020. That is 2020, so that is well over a year ago. And for information, you can call 484-729-4200, or get, or email at info@delco-era.com. So this is the Delaware County Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and we've had our rental inspector, Rich Haywood, share this as well. There's a shredding and e-waste event that has been, that has been planned. We're doing this with Media in Swarthmore. It'll be Saturday, July 17, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 101 Plush Mill Road at Ghulie Park, AKA the former Summit School Site. Shredding is no cost. Many of the electronics that you can drop off will be at no charge. There is a fee for some items, including the older style TVs. Flat-screen TVs are $20 each, computer monitors, air conditioners, microwaves, basically things that need to be disposed of in an environmentally friendly fashion do have a small fee associated with them. The Bureau of Elections, as I'm sure many of you are aware, the primary elections are coming up this, this Tuesday. A great resource is the election hotline at Delaware County, 610-891-VOTE. Again, that's 610-891-VOTE. A lot of information here, including where you can drop off your ballots, to find your polling location. The, the hours are Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, Tuesday, 8:30 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There's also information at delco PA.gov/vote/hotline. There are secure drop boxes throughout Delaware County. The closest one to the township is in the township at the Furnace Library. It's open 24 hours a day. It is under video surveillance. Recently, it was closed temporarily, which I understand was because the video surveillance is handled through solar power. And with all the rain and clouds that we'd had, that was why it was temporarily closed. So it does happen on rare occasions. So if, if you happen to get there and it is closed, please check out another location. There's information when it is closed about where you can go. I know there are locations in Rose Valley and Media Borough as well. PICO has a financial assistance program for people that are struggling to pay their bills. There's information at pico.com/help. They have customer assistance program, they have emergency rental assistance, payment arrangements, budget billing, and conditions where you can make, if you need to notify them that, you know, a shut-off would not be practical due to a health situation that you may have in your family. This is a good resource, so please, please don't let PICO turn the lights out on you without trying to do something about it first. We're excited. The Citizens Against Trash Group, they've done a number of cleanups in the township, and we're very grateful for the help that they've done. They've done cleanups on, in, off of the Blue Route, which a couple of us were involved with. They've done cleanups recently in Chester Park. They've got a cleanup going on this Saturday. They've also done some on Waterville Road, and they are going to officially be adopting Avondale Road going from the 320 intersection up to Rose Valley Road. And this is through the Keep PA Beautiful program. So we're very grateful for the, the CAT group, all their efforts. This has been largely organized by Cheryl Plunkett, so a big thank you to Cheryl and the CAT group. And the last item on my section was the summer meeting schedule, and that thankfully has been covered. So that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Manager Grady.
Mr. President, before, before you wrap things up, could I just add something really quick?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say, just to piggyback.
Oh, is your microphone on me?
Oh, good. So just to piggyback on what Manager Grady said, just wanted to remind the public, there is an election next week, and I wanted to take the opportunity to wish my best to Commissioner Garson, Commissioner McKenzie, and Commissioner Malloy. I wish you all the best of luck. I hope you have a great week, and I know you all do well. So, thank you.
Seconded, and wish you well, Robert. On which, how many, how many elections is this? Savvy, running out of hands. Well, good luck to all of you. It's a pleasure to search. It's a pleasure to work with all of you on the board, and good luck to all of you. It's not easy public service, for sure. And with that, we will adjourn our work session for May. We will, our next meeting is our legislative session on May?
27.
27? Or second, I'm sorry. It's the men.
27.
27. Thank you very much. Good night, all, and we'll see you on May 20.